Stand for the pledge of allegiance in the silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Should we do okay? Okay, we'll start with the consent items. We have the approval of the minutes from the June 17th regular meeting, the June 17th executive session, the July 9th regular meeting, and the July 9th study session. Are there any additions, corrections, issues, questions from the board member? Anyone in the public have any questions, comments, additions to the minutes? Okay, barring none, I'll entertain the motion.
I move we accept the consent items as presented.
Moved by Jenny.
Move.
Second by Mark. Any other questions? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion approved, six to zero. And we'll move on to the financial report. Shana, do you want to walk us through the funds reports?
Sure, please. For the education fund, we have monthly receipts of $1,036,444.15. Our year-to-date receipts are $6,330,683.52. Our month-to-date expenses are $930,965.82. And we did do another $300,000 transfer from education to operating in the month of June. Our appropriation balance is $6,155,050.45. So our net appropriations are sitting right at 49.98%. Our year-to-date expenditures are $6,159,111.55, leaving our cash balance at $633,625.62. In the debt service fund, that one for the month of June, we did receive our property tax distribution, so our receipts are $1,995,110.83. Our year-to-date receipts so far are $2,041,538.35. Our month-to-date expenses, because we also had a loan payments, loan payments were made in June, effective for July 1st, of $1,692,487.75. Our appropriation balance is $1,539,185.25, with a net appropriation of 47.40%. So we're right at that 50%. Our year-to-date total expenses out of our debt service is $1,702,687.75, leaving our cash balance of $1,803,929.5. And finally, our operations fund, again, because we did receive our June settlement, we have receipts of $1,943,564.81. Our monthly transfer in from education was $300,000. Our year-to-date receipts are $2,849,466.38. Month-to-date expenses were $411,170. And our appropriations are $2,902,650.10. Net appropriation balance is 56.94%. Our year-to-date expenditures are $2,194,910.90, leaving a cash balance of $989,152.17.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from board members about the financial report? Debt funds report, sorry. Any questions from the audit? Everybody okay? We're just doing the claims and payroll with this? Okay.
Sure.
Claims total $3,227,846.92. Any questions on the claims as they were sent out and posted on the website? And the payrolls totally, $800,000, $806,459.82. Any questions on the payrolls submitted to be approved? Any questions from the public on either the claims or the payrolls? Barring none, I'll accept a motion to approve the funds report, the claims, and the payroll.
So moved.
Moved by Ethan.
Second.
Second by Mark. Barring any other comments or thoughts? Please raise your right hand. Any dissenting? Motion approved, six to zero. Action items. We have the approval of building level handbooks that include the changes for the 2024, 2025 year.
I want to begin by thanking the board for their supporting that we spoke about this in the school's still session, study session, and we're waiting on some information around the attendance policy that legislators have passed and the communication devices that the legislators have passed. And then, working with the team and working with Lauren, I think that we've brought the comprehensive handbooks to you. And I understand there are still a couple of typos that I can work with the groups or changes that need to happen. The one thing most notable in all of this would be the change to before-school and after-school care in regards to adding the dollar fee to each of those, which is outlined in the handbook. I don't know if there are other specific questions or concerns. Mark, I appreciate you shared some things that we still need to change, and I'll work with the team to make sure.
Are we speaking directly to AI? I know I said I'm not going to ask you, I just sent out to the rest of the board, but not necessarily only that, but... With regards to work, what have you, I think we talked about, I think high school talks about plagiarism, but I don't know where AI sits within that. I don't know if that's considered plagiarism. I guess you're plagiarizing a computer.
We did add something about AI tools in there to kind of assist with that. So when we are dealing with AI a lot, it's, don't try and stop it, accept it, teach them how to use it appropriately. That kind of angle is what we in the education realm, whether I'm with, you know, city principals, city superintendents, city assistant principals, curriculum directors, that's the big push is either understand AI is here to stay and it's going to be the reality for these kids, and trying to educate them on how to best utilize that in a positive manner versus trying to block them from using it. So that's kind of what we're working on, but it's very new to, you know.
Yeah.
And it's very obvious when they use it. Like in an English class or something like that.
Overnight.
Yeah.
Where'd your vocabulary come from?
It's a double-edged sword, for sure.
What breaks sense, bro?
They can't read it out loud.
Or is there a hammer?
Dang.
But you say you've got AI tools that you'll be using to kind of counter some of that plagiarism.
There is some of that that you can utilize. Really, our best tools are English teachers because they recognize the kids writing like that, but... Some of the math has some issues with AI. I mean, AI is a problem across all realms, so it's easy to focus on English, but it's an issue for other subject areas as well as we learn and grow in it.
I've noted a lot of recent applications of AI being used towards complicated math stuff, that I've seen some people making sure AI can do it, and it can, and so now that's a little bit too... More the unexpected side, because you've already got calculators and stuff, but apparently AI math is also a big thing now.
Of course.
Yeah. Why wouldn't it be?
Any other questions on any of the handbooks? Anyone in the public have a comment, question? All right, barring none, I'll accept a motion to approve the handbooks as provided to us.
So moved.
You can get it to Mark, that's okay.
I'm number two.
Mark flew in. Jenny, second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, raise your hand, six to zero. All right, next we have the approval of the contract for the SLP services through Huddle for the 2024 school year.
So I want to begin, before I turn it over to Lucas, I want to begin by thanking him for his hard work and diligence. I know he's reached out to several. He has a plan for next year, Lucas, if you don't mind sharing that out just a bit and where you landed on this, but I do want to thank you publicly for your work. I know we've had several conversations, and you've provided supporting documentation in regards to emails and phone calls made, so I do appreciate your work on that.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's like anything with PT, OT, and speech. When fewer people out of the universities are graduating with that, and then the private sector is snatching them up, this is what we have to go to. Good contact at BIUSB for next spring. Keeping ear to the ground, get back ahold of her, see who she may have graduating to help us out to get back to in-person speech.
So we have two in-person SLPs, and this would be used more so. Can you explain how you will use this program, Lucas?
Yeah. The lady who does it is Asia, and just doing ACRs at the middle school last year, very nice, uses, you know, uses very, her case load is a lot smaller than the in-person ones. Just virtually and, you know, trying to work on the kiddos' speech and stuff like that, but she's very easy to work with, very nice lady.
Any questions from the board members about the SLP contract?
I just want to thank you, Lucas, as well for planning as much as possible for the upcoming years. Obviously, if there's no in-person people available, you can't create that out of thin air, but in these kinds of specialized positions, then you got to go out and recruit. And the fact that you're looking at that, I really appreciate that as there is just, there's a marked difference between a virtual and an in-person SLP. So we appreciate that you want to do what's best first.
Definitely. Thank you. Any other comments? Any comments from the public? Barring none, I'll accept a motion to approve the SLP contract. Any?
Move.
You guys, Kat got your phone?
Steven for the second. All in favor? Motion passes, six to zero. All right, next we have the approval of items to declare surplus from the food service department. Assuming this is not when they cleaned out the refrigerator.
A little surprise.
Freezer, I might take that.
Team has been doing a great job, as you'll see, with Wendy and her department and Scott and his, and then the principals are working with our maintenance crew in regards to a very comprehensive list that we anticipate bringing to you at the next board meeting, trying to clear off some items, some of it to take in for scrap, others may have some resale value. So Wendy, if you don't mind sharing what's on your list and what's happening with those items.
So we have a couple, they're called pass-through, little individual coolers with three doors. One came from Riddle, one came from Columbia. They had been inactive or not in use at least since before 2021. I had Doug come out and look and see if there was anything they could do with some of that equipment to see if it was functional. When their staff couldn't take care of it, we did reach out and have like either Benchmark or JK come and look at it, and everything that's listed on that list is non-reparable. Columbia uses their steam kettle to make soups and to boil water in a bigger batch, so we were going to try to move middles over there, but we ended up not being able to repair any of that also. And there's an outdated milk cooler that I believe, I don't know if anybody remembers Caroline Keel, but she won it in a contest when she was here, is also on that list that was recycled in that also.
Any questions, comments?
Do you already have units on order to replace them?
We've either already replaced it, most of that has just been sitting there. The only one that just recently went out was the kettle steamer at Columbia, and they have a steamer microwave, and they also have a tilting skillet. For now, we'll take care of that. Other than that, all the equipment has been replaced. We've got a partial branch for some of the milk coolers that we replaced that were coming off that list.
Surprise.
Any other questions or comments?
I think the picture's in there, too.
I know. From the public? Okay. Barring none, I'll accept a motion for...
So moved.
Steven? Second?
Second.
Second. All right, all in favor? Motion passes, six to zero. We now have the approval of items to declare surplus from the technology department.
So Doug, would you like to go through and share?
On this list are items that have died or any kind of problems we've had throughout the year that we just store until the summer, and we put them on this surplus and get rid of them all at once. We have a company come in and just take all of it. But most of the stuff is not repairable, pretty much everything on this list. Everything that we can use, we try to put back in our stock and everything, but everything on this list, everything is broken somehow. We're just ready to go.
Any questions about the surplus items from technology? Questions from the public? Great. Questions, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Steven?
Second.
Ethan? All in favor? Motion passes, six to zero. Now we have the approval of the revised cross-country field trip on July 29th, 2024.
So I'm sure you can share out a little bit.
You guys approved, I believe, last month or the month before for this, but Coach Gutman had some younger kids. We had listed nine through 12 to go. A couple seventh and eighth graders want to go, and middle school coaches are also going to be attending the trip, so they've asked that we amend it for seven through 12 instead of nine through 12, for the same date, same place, same game plan of go, sleep in a tank, get up and run all day. So on sand. Yes, yeah.
I think there's going to be a couple of kids, and one of them is a coach. What was that? Can I see? I'm sorry. There's only a couple wanting to go. One of them is a coach, just kidding, I was just kids.
Is that their idea of camp? Or your idea?
I don't see Mr. Renekton staying right here. Oh, you can't be out of the district a couple days before school starts.
Oh, no, it's okay.
And do you guys need an admin retreat?
Not like that.
Any questions about the amended cross-country field trip? Public? Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I move we accept the amended cross-country field trip.
By Jenny? Second by Mark. No other questions, comments? Everyone in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes, six to zero. And next we have the approval of policies, which are all conveniently listed on the agenda and on the website. Does anyone have any questions or comments or thoughts about the 20 or so policy recommendations that Neola sent us? If any board members would like to go ahead and read through that list, feel free to do that aloud, but...
That's all right. I was told I don't have to do that.
Attorney said I don't have to do it. It is fully published, online, on the agenda, behind me.
Lauren was like, "Please stop."
Any questions from the public on any of these policy changes? This is the final reading? Okay. So this is the final reading. Once we do the vote, these will be passed on to Neola to be changed on the website. I will accept a motion for approval of all of the listed policies. Moved by Jenny.
Second.
Second by Ethan. Last chance for comments. All right, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes, six to zero. All right, and then we have a first reading of policies, PO 5136 and PO 5200.
So I want to thank Ms. Adley for her help and support in writing these and listening to and understanding each of the administrators' concerns and wanting to make sure that we incorporate those things we talked about at the study session. What we use for the personal communication devices at the high school is going to look much differently than what that looks like at the elementary, so just wanted to make sure that I thanked her as well. And I know the team has spent a great deal of time, both with me and then communicating amongst themselves, so that we can make sure that we are all on the same page, so thank you.
Any questions about these two policies? This is the first reading, so we'll have a chance to digest it if you needed to, a little bit more, and we have two more readings. Anyone in the public have any questions about these policies? Okay. I'll accept a motion for, do we need a motion? No, I don't. Okay, it's just the first reading. Okay, moving on to donations, July 2024. We have one donation for Riddle Elementary, $1,200 for one school, one book by the Optimist Club of Rochester. Wow, that is fantastic. Thank you so much for everyone involved in the Optimist group. That is, it's always humbling, but that is, that's fantastic. Any questions about the donations this month?
I would make a comment on that. I'm in the Optimist Club, and I believe that that money actually came from Riddle, from Motodine. It was money the kids raised, and we just fed it through the Optimist Club, and it comes back to the school.
Oh, wow, okay.
From the Bob Club, I believe.
Okay. All right, well, wonderful. Please tell the kids that are active in that, thank you so much. That is, that's a lot of hard work. It's a lot of money. It's good for them. Thank you. Okay, I will accept a motion for the approval of the donations.
So moved.
Moved by Ethan, second.
Second.
By Mark. All in favor? Motion passes, six to zero. All right, moving on to personnel report. Personnel report for July 22nd, 2024, for recommendation, under recommendations, we have Riddle Elementary, summer intercession. We have Lisa Coulter, teacher, hourly rate 4613. Amy Freeman's teacher, hourly rate 4775. Heather Schaefer, instructional assistant, hourly rate 1668. CIA positions 2024, 2025, and 2025 to 2026. We have Alyssa Ramsey, stipend. All of these are stipends, $2,250. So we have Alyssa Ramsey, Jolaine Rohr, Johanna Johnson, and Elena Adams, Elena Adams. RMS, Jenny Baumann, internal transfer from fourth grade to fifth grade, RMS, special education teacher, salary stays the same. Lindsay Pryor, sixth grade ELA teaching position at RMS, annual salary $54,650. Summer intercession, Emily Brown, teacher position, hourly rate $36. CIA positions for 2024, 25, and 2025, 26. All of these positions are paid at a stipend of $2,250. We have Rebecca Bowlinger, fifth grade remediation teacher, Jenny Moore, sixth grade math teacher, Abby Hotashell, seventh grade science teacher, and Tristan Wilson, fifth through seventh elective teacher. That's kind of a time twister. RHS athletic recommendations, we have Daniel Bailey, RHS girls golf assistant, stipend $1,170. Hannah Seaward, RHS cross-country assistant coach, stipend $1,170. Diego...
Ochoa.
Ochoa, thank you. RHS cross-country volunteer assistant, volunteer. Amanda Boldry, color guard sponsor, stipend $900. Eric Murphy, seventh grade football assistant coach, stipend $2,100. Athletic resignations, Nate Basham from the following, RHS assistant coach football, RHS assistant coach girls basketball, RMS head coach track. Social services, Hannah Moore, developmental preschool teacher, annual salary $44,300. Transportation department. Did I miss that? No. I got that, all right, sorry. Transportation department, Logan Young, bus driver for RCSC, pay based on route assigned. Mary Scott, special needs bus aide for RCSC, per day $80. Darlena, Darlena? Darlena Klinger, special needs bus aide for RCSC, per day $80. Food service, Robin Gray, food service assistant sub of, as of August 13th, 2024, hourly rate $13. Joshua Wean, transferring from Riddle to RMS, food service manager, hourly rate $16.38. Linda Turnipseed, transferring from RHS assistant to interim, hourly rate $14.77. I'm sorry, transferring from RHS assistant to interim food service manager at Riddle. Is that correct? That was Linda Turnipseed. Catherine Lindsay, transferring from Riddle to RMS, food service assistant, pay will remain the same. Resignation, Judith Johnson, full-time bus aide, who will remain part-time subbing. Hannah Smith, kindergarten instructional assistant at Columbia Elementary. Any questions on any of that this month?
There were others that we'll be bringing to you at the regular meeting before the study session. There are still a few more hires that we're working on, and I know Jason turned in a couple of today in regards to some resignations, so we'll continue to keep you updated.
Boy, how bad did you have to fight Mr. Reneki for his food service?
This is, she was lovely, and she decided this was the best thing to do.
That is a very well-loved employee. He is fantastic. They're, all food service workers are fantastic, but he stands out when you go into Riddle.
Well, we're very excited.
He is amazing. Any questions on any of the personnel report? Happy to see everybody returning. Questions from the public? I'll accept a motion to approve the personnel report.
So moved?
Moved by Jenny.
Second.
Second by Ethan. Second by Ethan. All in favor? Personnel report approved, six to zero. Mrs. Vance?
If we can begin the official reports. So Mr. Haas, if you'd like to go first.
July twenty-ninth and thirtieth, we will have technology pickup. Mr. Kissler's computer is ready to go. That's big for it to be successful for the kids on day one. So if you can get it there from nine to two, that'd be great to get that device. We did start, I call it band camp, I think they still call it band camp. They were out there marching without instruments today. They didn't seem to be enjoying that as much as they usually do. So maybe they'll add instruments tomorrow, but it was nice to see that. Fall sports are starting to get into full swing here at the end of next week or two weeks from now, so... And the building's looking good. Dawn and her crew have done a great job. So give them a pat on the back, Doug, if you would. And Doug's crew is getting everything looking good around the football field for August sixteenth. It'll be our first extravaganza for that. We're ready with academics. I think we're ready to roll, so questions?
I have a question. A couple people asked me this, and I honestly was like, I thought I was telling them the right thing, but I'm not sure. So with the eighth grade, I know they have a... They have the technology pickup from nine to two at times, but then they also have the open house. They can pick up everything at the open house, or do they have to come both times?
No, they can get everything at the open house, but they can also get it earlier if they want.
Okay.
We don't differentiate with that, so... But yeah, we do have the open house. That's a lot for the parents more than the kids usually, because they... The kids came over before school ended, right? Lucas and Cassie did a great job of letting us bring the homerooms over, and we showed them everything, so now parents can come in, maybe kind of ease their minds as we transition over to the big building and get things rocking and rolling for them, so...
Great.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Haas?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So July thirty-first, we'll have Riddle to Middle, so that's for the incoming fifth grade kiddos. They will come, and that is the most important time for them. We already did an open house back in May, but this will be where they come, go through... They're being given a breakfast and a lunch this time, so thank you, Wendy. They'll go through the breakfast line, see how that works, go through the lunch line, see how that works, go through their schedule, meet all their teachers, see who's in their classrooms, be able to get their lockers put together and practice that lock, so it's a good half-day for them. Then in the afternoon of that day, sixth and seventh graders are invited in to come and do the same thing, pick up their iPads, get locks, get organized, and ready to go. Other than that, we're just scheduling all these new enrollments we have. We'll... I think we counted twenty so far, so that's good. Just getting everything ready, thanks to our crew. We're getting everything shampooed and cleaned. We're walking around, as we do like every week, and just see the progress, and it looks great. Teachers are doing a great job getting everything set up. Maintenance is doing a great job making everything look good and smell good, so we're ready to go. It's all been good. It's a thing. At one point in June, I smelled a mouse, so we got that taken care of.
Stewart Little?
Yep. I don't know where. Maybe it's picnic somewhere.
Any questions? Mr. Bernanke?
We have open house on August thirty-first as well, from five-thirty to seven. I think our pictures are scheduled for August eighth. And so we're already talking beginning of the school. We'll do our beginning of the school year testing, not obviously the Friday, but the week after, the following week. Some shout-outs here. Thanks to Tech for all the installations. I don't know if we call them the new smart boards, if there's another name for them, but those are pretty sweet. And thanks to Jerry, Tanya, and Laura for getting our building. It's looking really awesome, and Mrs. Schaefer and Mrs. Kimmel are already getting all our tags ready for our kids to make sure we get them on the right bus on Thursday. It's a big thing, so that's what we've got going on.
Maybe it's not exactly appropriate for a move, but it's a building, the roof all done, it looks like everything's pulled away.
Yep, we'll have the final punch-up on Friday. We're gonna have our meeting to finalize everything, but that's gone very smoothly as well.
Still blue.
Oh, they covered that up for me.
Mr. Flighner?
Okay. We just finished up last week for our summer reading program, and that was a very successful program. We had very good attendance during those month and a half that we had kids coming in. And really good program, a lot of things going on with the kids. And it was very well-attended, so we really appreciate all the help and the effort and stuff that went into that program. We just started our intercession program, and our intercession program is... We have Little and Columbia both over there, and we had about a little over thirty kids today, which was very good. It was really nice to be able to sit down in the lunchroom and have breakfast with those kids. They're so excited to be back in the building and to just spend some time with them. It was a completely different feel in our building today, because we got to spend some time with the kids. Summer reading, we got to do the same thing, but they were a little more spread out, so intercession is rolling, and that will conclude on Thursday, and then we'll be ready to go. Like all the other buildings, we've been getting ready for the start of school. Our maintenance team has done a fantastic job. Our building looks great. Tech has been over there working hard with the smart boards, getting those in, getting the old smart boards down. So we appreciate all the help that the Tech and the maintenance department has done. Our summer food program at Columbia has been very successful, too. We even had some parents this morning show up and eating with their kids. So we appreciate all that. The food service department has worked all summer to have those opportunities for the kids and the parents to come in. And it's really been nice to just have them show up and go eat and enjoy a good meal, so a big thanks to them as well. We've got our open house coming up on July thirty-first, and one of the things that is going to be a little bit different about our open house than has been in the past is we are creating... My teachers and Brenda McLean have really... We've talked about this for years, on how we want to get our parents kind of more involved. Not involved, I shouldn't say that, because our parents are very involved. We want to provide our parents more resources, show them kind of what is available in our community, what types of things are there for them to help them. A lot of our parents at Columbia are coming in. This is maybe their first child, their first experience with school. They have a lot of questions, and a lot of them have some needs. So we have organized like a resource fair for our open house, and in our gym, we're gonna set up tables. Right now, we've got about eight to ten organizations from within the community. I'll just read a few of them. Fort County. We're gonna have some representative from Matthews Market come in, and another representative to head up the clubs for boys and girls, community partners, Little Lambs, Fulton County Public Library. We're working on Fulton County Hope Youth Outlet Center, Division of Family Resources. Both our local fire or police department and sheriff's department are gonna be there. We're working on trying to get the fire department out to possibly bring fire...
Apparatus and...
The things that...
Extinguishes?
Smoke alarms. Smoke alarms. Fire alarms.
Get them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You were almost there. But you're right. You are right. But the intent is just to have an opportunity, as parents are in our building, to walk around. Five-twenty-nine, we're working on trying to get them there as well. But to have an opportunity to meet some of the people in our community that have resources available, that can help them in certain situations, things that we can't always help with, but they may need. And I've got to give Brenda McLean all the credit for the legwork. She's been working on this this summer. We talked about it at the end of the year, wanting to do it, and she's making it happen. And I'm really excited about all of them coming on our first day, so that the parents have that opportunity. And we hope to build on that later in the year, possibly having some more similar-type things, or even, you know, some some sessions, classes, things like that, that parents can come in if they want to learn about some of the community organizations and stuff that we have. So we're working on that, and first day is on next Friday. I think that's it.
Jason, would you please share all of the work that you've put into and the benefits that you're seeing in reverse on On My Way Pre-K and how that's working for you?
Yeah, On My Way Pre-K, okay. We've... You guys, you know, at the end of the year, we got our approval of On My Way Pre-K. We got certified as On My Way Pre-K. That's kind of only half of it, because in order for it to really benefit parents in our community that are utilizing our preschool, it requires a lot of paperwork on their part. They have to submit a lot of documentation. They have to be eligible for the benefits, and that's not an easy task, because just giving it to a parent and asking them to fill it out is not easy, because there's a lot of questions they have and things like that. So last Friday, we held a little open house invitation to all the parents that were interested and and possibly could be eligible for the On My Way Pre-K funding. And we had a really good turnout. It was fantastic. The On My Way Pre-K rep came, our local rep, or not local, she's up north, I think, almost in Michigan. But she came and helped out, because when she sends emails, they don't know who Claudia is, and so we wanted to put a face, you know, to the name and build kind of that relationship. And we were able to get seven parents fully signed up with everything that we need, and we're we're gonna... They'll all get approved, and then we've got about five more. And what that does is it'll pay for their preschool. The On My Way Pre-K will pay for their preschool, so they don't have to pay for that out of their pocket. It pays us more than... We actually get more money through that than what we get when they get a local scholarship. But the other thing that it does is those seven people would have gotten the local scholarship, so that will take a little bit of relief off of our local funds at the community foundation, and they do a great job. They've been so supportive of our families, anybody that's applied, that's eligible. They've taken good care of them, but that'll ease up a little bit of their pressure that they receive on that. And that's kind of where we're at on the On My Way Pre-K front right now. So we'll continue to work on trying to get parents involved and signed up, and it's not uncommon. I mean, you don't... When you get On My Way Pre-K, you don't get all of your kids enrolled in it, because they're not all eligible, and there's a lot of things to it. So the fact that we've got seven, you know, right at the start of the year before we've even started, is a really good start for us, so so we'll receive funding for them. And Stacia Conrad, by the way, has been a very big help on the On My Way Pre-K. She does a fantastic... She's our CIA coach for our Pre-K, and she does a great job with communicating with the On My Way Pre-K ladies and helping with the paperwork aspect of it, because there's a lot to that, so she was very big in that day, our Friday day, that we had everybody there, and she helped get that set up, so got to give her credit for that. That was really, really her doing, so.
Mr. Kehoe?
July thirty-first, we have instructional assistant training here at the Learning Center. Sixty-four-ish? We'll get them, you know, through the training that has to go on, and different people in the corporation that come and talk about, you know, time cards, handbook, and all this and that. So we'll get through that. I do appreciate maintenance. I know no one is really tethered to this building, but it is very nice whenever they were able to come, and, you know, each of the rooms in this building got shampooed last week, and that was very much appreciated.
Mr. Haas?
All the buses are cleaned and ready, thanks to Michelle Hager and her crew that helped me finish them up. They did a tremendous job of cleaning them. The routes, I'll be ready Friday, I'm hoping. I'm, yeah. Rough go with Kim being gone, but the girls are doing good, Emily and Heather now. They're doing good at getting them figured out, and three of us, we all get something done, but... But yeah, it's pretty... We have our safety meeting tomorrow night here with the drivers, from four to... I've got four videos to watch. It's a fun time, but got that tomorrow night from here. And the drivers are... I got a full fleet of drivers this year, first time in a long time, so I could be a available sub. Instead of Rob and Peter, the Paypals, and moving drivers around, pulling teachers out of the school to run this and that, so that'd be a good year, and the drivers are ready, and I'm ready to go, so...
Any questions?
Our summer feeding program will be ending this week. The Kiwanis Library and, get this right, Middle will finish on Thursday, and then the Fulton County Public Library, Columbia, and the high school will finish on Friday. The direct certification is opened up, and those are going to start being processed through... Free reduced applications are coming in. Our annual financial report is on hold, because the state is having an issue with their website, so that could be a little bit later this year. We have our first audit August seventh. My child nutrition specialist will be in the administration building for that, and it's supposed to be an all-day event. It's over June's SFP numbers, so she'll mainly focus on the high school, because they have the main spot that they satellite out of. All the managers are in some building, if not getting back into their building to get opened up, and finishing any training that we need to have for the staff to start the school year.
Any questions?
I want to start off by saying thank you to all you, all the buildings for knowledge in the maintenance department. I know it doesn't get said enough to them, but when we have a meeting this week, we'll... I'll convey that to them, and I know it'll mean a lot to them, so they do bust their hump to get stuff done, and I've got a good, versatile crew that's willing to go just about anywhere and help us out in the district, so... This week, we're gearing up for asphalt sealing over at Riddle. That'll happen starting Thursday, and you did say you wanted to talk to them, didn't you, Luke?
Yeah, I reached out to them.
Okay. And then, other than that, we, just on the big dash, said get ready for school.
Before we close, what people don't see is the large group meeting that we had, I think it was last week, where everybody in this room, including Technology and Shawna and everybody, were around one table. There were lots of communication, problem-solving, helping each other, supporting each other, coming up with ideas, and at the same time, there was laughter and support, so what a... Just a great team, and I think you saw some of that here, but just a lot of support and team dynamics that happens right here in this room, so thank you all for that. I'm sure we'll be ready. I'm sure we'll be ready next week, and we'll be pushing out information to parents. We'll be talking about... One thing that I do want to share is we work so hard collectively in this room to make sure that students are safe. In those first few days, transportation is going to run much slower. It's not indicative of the pickup times and drop-offs that you're gonna see throughout the year, but what it is trying to do is making sure that we get the right kids in the right places. Drivers know their students' names. They know where they're being dropped off. They're making sure somebody's at home. That takes a lot of effort from each building, right, to transportation, to the drivers, to those that are dropping them off. So we ask the community to be patient. It usually takes about, Kevin, five or six days, and we are locked in, and we have things moving slowly, or moving... That's what I'm... Moving completely smoothly. But it is going to be slow at first, so we do ask for your support. If you have questions, make sure that you reach out, but I do want to share that out, because that seems to be the largest hurdle the first few days of school, so... But thank you to each of you. We rallied a meeting late this afternoon. Everybody was so receptive and willing to come in and support each other, so thank you. I don't think the public, and sometimes even the board, doesn't realize the dynamics in this room, and it's greatly appreciated.
Okay. Yeah? Any other board comments, questions?
I have a question. Yeah, I should have asked this. It's July, and I don't really think about school starting next week, but... but should have brought it up at our study session two weeks ago, but do you know if the mayor has gotten anywhere with crossing guards?
So he did hear out that he is working with different, I forget what meeting I was in. Were you, or one of you working at that meeting? He is working on, I get confused where I've been. He is working on a crossing guard here and then one on Main Street, and he had a couple of ideas and leads in regards to whom that person might be, working together with that, but he is dedicated to making sure that that happens. So he also putting up a lot of signage, painting those paths, those types of things. So he, we are constantly in communication. I know he had some ideas for some high school students. We've been relaying that to Oscar and his team and that he has shared that he is dedicated to doing that, so. Is it the Chamber of Commerce meeting? Now I know. He was there and he shared that out, so. Yep.
Any other questions? Anyone in the public?
She's got points.
Okay, far enough. You're welcome to stay, but this meeting is adjourned.